Have you started to record?
No.
I'll wait for a second.
You're getting better than every time you do it.
Somebody has. Somebody has done it.
In an unusual order of events, we are actually going to roll call into executive session, and then we will be returning to regular session. We'll open up this meeting. So, Maryla Chappell?
Yes.
Maren?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
Laura?
Present.
And Cynthia Kozinski?
Yes.
So, we are going to move into executive session pursuant to MGL C-30A S-21-A3 to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation with the EEA Teachers Association Support Unit. We're going to move into executive session here, then we'll be returning, and we will begin the regular session. Okay, so see you in a little bit.
So, Russ just joined.
Okay.
But we don't have him there.
All right. Okay, so we are back into regular session, and the next thing on our agenda is correspondence.
I do have two pieces of correspondence to report from this week. We received two similar emails from concerned community members, Lindsay Sekula and Katie Terrio, who had concerns and questions regarding how the decision is made regarding sending students to CTech versus to Smith vocational, regarding both program placement, but also, you know, whether or not like half-day versus full-day swap makes sense. And that's all I got for correspondence.
Okay, did we have gifts?
We do have a gift.
Oh.
Have a motion to approve the donation of school supplies for incoming students at Mountain View School from Mary Lee Latenville. I don't have any other background on that. If there's any.
Do you have any information on that donation?
No.
Okay.
All right. That sounds lovely.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mary Lee Latenville.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. Ben?
Aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Cindy?
Aye.
Yes.
Erin?
Aye.
Sam? Okay, great.
Just get the line.
Sorry. That's all right. The next is student representative update, and I do not see... Is Mackenzie here?
Nope.
Okay. All right. Okay. So, now we'll open up public comment for 15 minutes, and I'm going to ask anybody who wants to say anything to make sure that you let us know. Lindsay Cool has raised...
Did you have one?
And please keep your comments to three minutes. So, go ahead, Lindsay.
Hi there. Thanks for taking my comment. I just also wanted to hear about the Smith vocational options versus CTech and inquire more about why we aren't able to send kids for other than two vocations to Smith Oak. I have a parent of two children who are really looking forward to trying to go to Smith Oak, and unfortunately, you know, the programming is not the ones that they want to go to. So, I'd really like to try to get some more information and figure out, can we fix this problem? Is this something that we can look at in the future? As a parent, I'm really frustrated with the option of only two, like I said, two vocations allowed at Smith Oak. CTech half-day doesn't make sense to me, and busing the kids out to West Springfield doesn't make sense to me, especially for my family, and they have health needs. They need to be close. North Hampton's a lot closer. Just wanting to really open this conversation and see if we can, you know, get a resolution to potentially opening up more availability for children in East Hampton to go to Smith Oak. Just a passion that, you know, I would really like to look at and ask that we explain more and maybe look at other options and availability for the school district. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Just raise your hand if you want to speak. I don't see anybody. Give it another 30 seconds. And I just scroll there and make sure.
I'm just running the following on.
So, if anybody wants...
We do have someone who just joins.
Okay. If anyone wants to speak during public comment, please do send down a signal. And I don't see any signal.
No signal.
Okay. All right, we're going to close public speak and go on to our superintendent update.
Great. Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to share some things that have been going on since we last met. The first one was this last Friday, MSBA, Massachusetts School Building Association, featured our school at Mountain View. It's called "Story of a Building." We had... There were 65 attendees that came, and they represented over 30 school districts. These were school districts that are in different stages of either getting accepted for the building and bringing new schools or have already been accepted, and they're just in the stages now of what everybody here went through for the building of Mountain View. There were a lot of positive comments that came out about the school, how great it is, the safety features that have been put into it, how welcoming it is for everybody. An amazing part, that three elementary schools and a middle school got combined together, and everything is working very effectively. The two past superintendents came and also presented, which was really great. And the business manager before Nick also came and presented. We had members of the committee, the school building committee, also present. So, it was the architect and the OPM, as well as the contractor presented. So, it was a really nice day. And what came out of it too is that the core values of what that school was going to represent, it was very clear to everybody that from the beginning stages of planning for that school all the way to now, that those values have been kept alive, and there's a plan for them to continue to be kept alive. So, it transitioned over three superintendents, and the values were so strong that it's just so easy to pick up and to continue following what was set. We began our second... We had our second leadership meeting of the district, which is District and School Leaders Meet. And I brought the book to show you. We're all... This is the first book study that we're doing so far this year. It's by Katie Novick and Kristin Rodriguez. Katie Novick is a leader in Massachusetts for Universal Design Learning plus multi-tiered students of support. So, we're all reading that book, having a discussion about how to bring MTSS here in East Hampton and support of students. I started a Leadership Academy for grades six, seven, and eight. So, we're meeting twice a month. Started... My first meeting was last week. It was a great meeting. There were like 20 kids involved in it, students that wanted to get involved, mostly sixth graders and eighth graders. So, we spoke about what our vision is going to be for this year, what we've got to learn about leadership from each other, and that what type of service project can we all do for the school. We're interviewing Thursday for the diversity liaison. So, we should hopefully have somebody to fill that position. In the meantime, the assistant principal and myself have been filling the position and covering for lunches. I have to say that I try to go at least three days a week, and I am thoroughly enjoying being with the students and having conversations with them. And we talk about all kinds of things, and they look forward... They see me in the hallway. Like, oh, we were yesterday. It happened to me one day I missed because of another meeting. So, it's been really great. So, when we do hire this person, I'm going to feel a little sad that I won't be the person going in for the lunches, but I told the students that I would still come and visit.
I think you should.
Yes. Next meeting, we're going to do a full MKAS report for you. We also have a great data program, and Julianne and I were looking at it today. It does a lot of work. It tells you exactly where the areas are for students individually, for teachers, for classrooms. So, we're going to show you that data and show you the... Actually, the... What do you call it? The platform, because it's amazing platform. You don't have to do a lot of figuring on yourself. You can just put what you want into this, and it will actually give you charts and lead you where you need to go. And teachers also have access to it themselves, so they can look at their progress over the years, and then they can also look at each individual chart's progress. So, that's where we're at for these last three weeks. So, looking forward to showing you the data in the November meeting.
Cool. Thank you.
That's good. The leadership meeting sounds really great, and the universal design idea sounds great. I was thinking about this academy. Could you say more about that? Like, that seems dreamy.
The academy is just what we're calling it, a leadership academy for the students, because it's a special group they've been... They self-selected for. And it's kind of funny too, because there were sixth grade, you know, young men that always just wanted to talk to me about football and what position they're playing. And then the eighth grade girls want to talk about some very really big, great lofty ideas. So, it's really bringing all these together so that we can talk about what is leadership? You know, what can each of you do for this school? And, you know, what can we do together to continue to improve? And then look at what are the things we're agreeing on our core values here? And also service learning, because I think it's really important for kids. They have to do an eighth grade civic project anyway, right? But it's really important that kids start realizing that service learning is every day in your school, and how can you have a part of that?
That's really great.
How many students do you have?
It was 20.
Academy?
20 students.
Amazing.
It was really good. We had a great first meeting.
Can we come to that? You can say no.
Yeah, you can come.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, they would love to see you come to that. I'll tell you when the next one is. Yeah, it's during the school day. So, we meet at 8:15 in the morning.
Okay.
Yeah, you got to get up then.
And let's see, my next one is... It is November 1st.
That's awesome.
November 1st, yep, at 8:15.
Next week.
That's next week.
Oh, yeah. Can I actually say one more thing? That... The event that happened, the school building story, was that documented somewhere or somehow? Was there like a video made? Because it feels like there should be some...
No, they didn't video it. But we do have brochures on it. Jill has some videos that she included in it, but I don't think they videoed it. We could share...
Like a little highlight reel and put it on the website.
That would be really nice.
It just seems like something somebody should be able to refer to in 15, 20, 30, 50 years, like just as a... Here's a thing that happened.
Yeah, we could see what we could put together for that.
I mean, there's a slide deck that we got from...
There's a slide deck.
Yeah. MSBA. We could post it on the website.
Do you want to put that on the school website?
I think that'd be fun, to have like a little highlight reel from that day. You know, the stuff that was talked about, but also just the fact that 65 people came and were impressed...
Yes.
Came and were impressed by what we did. Yeah.
Well, you said 30 different schools too. That's a big deal.
Yeah, I agree.
We could do a press release.
Yeah, let's do it.
If our way is reading.
Celebrate that.
Yeah. The reading, yeah. It's out there.
Yeah, I can have Lindsay put together some language.
We've never seen facts.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Awesome.
Lindsay?
Absolutely. Wonder if she just heard me say...
Next thing.
Probably.
Any more questions?
I just wanted to say, I love... You guys are doing this as an admin book club that you're just getting into. I love that. I just think it's so fun.
Yeah.
I love book club.
Yes.
Thanks for sharing with us.
You can join if you want to join.
When do you meet for those?
So, the next book club is... Let's see. And we're actually reading like chapters, like the next three chapters. So, we read the first two.
I think I could pick up a lot from that college classroom.
Let's see if it is... Let's see. Oh, it might be.
You don't have to tell them what the meeting is. It's just...
Hey, I'll let you know. I think it's... I want to say it is... It was supposed to be the eighth, but we changed that. Or maybe it's the first. Let's see if it's the first. That's the first. It's a busy day, November 1st.
This day.
And that is at 2:45 to 4:15.
Nice. I love it.
Did you want to talk about the MASC annual meeting?
Oh, yes, I thought about that one. So, I did send all of you the resolutions, and it is Wednesday. I don't know what time of day, because they couldn't really tell me, but Wednesday is the voting day, and the resolutions were very interesting, for sure. And then I think you just have to... I think, Sam, you are the only one that responded to that.
Yeah, I signed up for that.
So, probably contact Sue for all your reservations and that.
Yeah. Sue and I have been in touch.
So, you're going to that?
Yes.
And that's...
No, to the whole... So, there's the... Are you talking about the one?
Conference.
The conference, like...
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I'm going to that. I didn't get a room, because they were all sold out anyway, but I've got some friends in the area, so... So, yeah, I'm going to go to that, and I've been looking through the... If you guys have input on like... There's a couple of... There was like one workshop around buses in particular that I thought would be good for me to go to, but if you guys want to look through and make other requests for me to try to go to as many panels as possible at the same time.
So jealous.
Thank you for doing that. My schedule can't make it work. Yeah, I got the time off work, so I should be good. Yeah, so... I'm glad you're going. But yeah, so looking forward to it. We'll put it on the... Do you want to do a report when you come back? Yeah. Put it on the agenda. Yeah, that's a great idea. I like reports.
At the November meeting?
November 14th.
November 14th, yeah. Does that give you enough time? Yeah. What else am I going to do when I'm out there?
It happens. The election happens.
No, I think that would be nice. Here you go. No, I would like to do that, yeah. That would be good. I'd like to also like share with the community too about like what that is and what people are actually talking about.
Right.
And so, these resolutions will be all voted on?
Right.
And Sam will vote. Is it like a... We should vote to have... Yeah, you have to...
Represent.
You have to vote to send me to represent.
Can we do that now?
So, we have to make a motion to vote to send you.
There will not be another meeting, so...
To vote. Move to...
I know, but I mean, at this point in the agenda.
Yeah.
Motion to appoint Sam Hunter as a voting participant and representative of the East Hampton School District at the annual MASC conference.
Any other discussion? Okay, Ben?
Ben, her's the aye.
Laura?
Aye.
Cindy, aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
It'd be funny if I voted against myself going to the person I signed up for.
That would be funny. Okay, Policy Subcommittee? It just says that the minutes have been submitted?
Yes.
Okay.
So, do we vote to approve those now?
No, we have to have my direction.
And Finance?
The Finance Committee meeting will be meeting before... On the 14th of November before our next school committee, so we'll have something to report back there.
Okay, good. Okay, Business Update.
Good evening. I come to you tonight with a proposal of sorts to increase the hourly wages of our cafeteria workers that work for Chartwell's, who's our contracted vendor. They approached me not too long after the school year started. You know, with some concerns about their current wages. The bulk of their workers, like the line workers, the cashiers, the assistant cooks, were just making minimum wage. Cooks, head cooks, were paid a little bit higher than that. The one at Mountain View is making $17.50 an hour, and the one at the high school is making $17 an hour. Obviously, there's, you know, some concerns with that based on the, you know, current state of the economy and the fact that, you know, neighboring districts are much likely to pay higher than that. So, they came to me with a proposal to increase the wages of their hourly workers. The reason I'm bringing it to the committee tonight is because it does have an impact on our contract, so I believe it would require a vote. But, you know, the financial impact would be certainly something that we can manage, given the amount of reimbursements that we're currently getting with the meals being universally free and the higher participation that we have from in the past. The projections would put us at about a $21,872 a year impact. That's based on a full 180-day school year, so less of an impact for this current year. But, you know, it's certainly something I support. We can financially do it. It's going to make it probably easier to hire people and also retain them, and, you know, they're working hard every day. I see what they're doing in the kitchen, serving meals and providing access to food for our kids so they can learn and, you know, and have as good of an experience at school as they can. So, basically, every year when I submit the annual renewal documents to get our NSLP renewed, we have to submit a contract addendum, which is basically just some updated numbers, because you have your contract in year one. You got to change the dates, because it's now year two. There's a line in there that says labor costs not to exceed, and then there's a figure there based on the projections that they came up with. So, if the committee votes to increase these wages, that number would essentially change for the rest of this year. Again, we can financially do it. I support it. I think it's the right thing to do. But Chartwell's can't do it without us just due to the way the contract's written, because they're our vendor.
What would... You said it was... The rates are currently 17 and 17.50?
For the cooks, yes.
And how much would that be going up to?
The proposed wage increases are $1 per hour for the cooks, $1.75 an hour for the assistant cook. There's an assistant cook at Mountain View, but not at the high school. The food service, like line workers and cashiers, the proposed increase is $1.25 per hour. And the administrative assistant, who she only works part-time. She's not there all 180 school days. The hourly increase would be 75 cents per hour.
Would this be effective as of the day we vote on it? Like, voting today? Or would it be retroactive to the start of the school year?
I believe it would be as when you vote. There wasn't anything mentioned about retroactive increases here in the proposal I was given.
Madam Chair? I just think these increases are long overdue. I was thrilled when Nick came and said Chartwell's had approached them. There have been conversations, and I've certainly gotten requests and sat down with some of the line food workers about getting an increase, and it's a contract within another department. I mean, they understood, but this is... I'm thrilled that Nick is bringing this forward and that Ken and the crew at Chartwell's understand the situation and taking care of people.
I would advocate if it's possible for us to do it retroactively to the start of the school year.
Agreed.
I would advocate for that.
I can bring that up when I let them know the outcome of the vote.
I'd be surprised if they refused.
Me too.
Any other thoughts?
I was wondering, will this make us competitive with neighboring districts?
It will make us more competitive. You know, I wouldn't be surprised if, at the start of the next school year, there's another proposed increase just going into the year. I'm not sure, because, I mean, some districts have their own food service departments, and their employees are members of a bargaining unit, you know, for that particular district. Others contract out. I know our particular vendor, they also have Granby Public Schools in Massachusetts, and this will make us more competitive with them, certainly. So, it will certainly help.
My only question is, why is this happening now that we're into the school year as opposed to a contract negotiation before the start of the school year?
That's a very good question. I mean, usually, like, there's not a lot of negotiating that happens with the contract. I mean, the workers hadn't gotten a raise in, I don't know how long. So, when I get sent like the proposed addendum to the contract, it comes with some numbers, some projections of, you know, how many employees, what the hourly rates are, how many meals they plan to serve, and or, you know, how much money in reimbursements we'll get and things like that. I may have a couple of questions about it, you know, and we'll go back and forth a bit, but there's really not a lot of negotiating that goes with it. I'm not sure why now is the time that I was approached. It's very likely that there's some food service workers that may be looking around for other work, and, you know, it became an urgent situation.
Yeah.
I think these are very reasonable amounts.
Yeah.
They're very... I know it adds up, but they're very tiny increases.
It only adds up a little bit, to be honest. And you said that we have higher reimbursements now too, so...
Yeah, the amount is higher just because there's so much increased participation in the food service department than it was when the meals were paid. So, yeah, it's definitely something that's doable.
Okay.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the pay rate increase recommended by Nick with the... To be adjusted retroactively to the beginning of the school year.
Second.
Any other discussion? Mayor?
Nope. Oh, yes.
Sam?
I know, I switched... Yeah, I know. That was... Oh, boy.
Sam?
Yeah.
Yes.
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 And Cindy?
Thank you, Nick.
I seconded.
Thank you. Thank you, I'll let the folks from Chartwells know tomorrow morning.
Thank you, thank you.
Give them our appreciation.
The only thing I might recommend too is if there's gonna be more conversation for next year, that we try to maybe do it within our budget process as opposed to outside of that budget timeline.
Yeah, I can certainly bring that up.
Yeah. It's like a good yearly.
Okay, action items.
Let me switch over. All right. I move to approve the school payroll dated 10/5/2023 in the amount of $583, nope,
I second that.
Okay. Mayor?
Yes.
Merron?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Sam?
Yep.
Laura?
Yes.
And Cindy, yes.
Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated 10/5/2023 in the amount of $172,911.73.
Second that.
There?
Can we go to all, just saying yes? No, we're a person?
Excuse me?
Just say yes.
We can all, yeah, we're not an exact...
That's true, we're opening up our old routine.
Yeah.
All right.
All right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed now?
Saving 45 seconds.
On each one of these though.
I appreciate it, ma'am.
Motion to approve the school payroll dated 10/19/2023 in the amount of $579,319.84.
I second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated 10/19/2023 in the amount of $452,581.23.
Second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated 10/12/2023 in the amount of $39.99.
Second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Move, motion to approve the minutes of the August 25th, 2023 regular meeting.
Second. Sorry, Merron.
Go ahead, no, please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve the minutes of the September 12th, 2023 regular meeting.
Second.
This one I need to abstain because I was not there. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve the minutes of the October 10th, 2023 regular meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And our next meetings will be November 14th and December 12th. Is there an other?
Could I, yeah, can I make a request before we adjourn? Just for something to appear, and I, it may take, we only have two more meetings this calendar year, so maybe it's something that the superintendent could put on whenever it becomes available. I would love to see kind of relating back to public speak and some comments that we heard from parents. I would love to see a fulsome presentation on the current vocational opportunities to kids, explaining to the public the CTEC programming, the situation with Smith-Vogue, the relative costs. And maybe some things could be unearthed to maybe reach a better...
I would really appreciate that too.
Yeah.
That was my comment for other two.
Okay.
Will we put that out there?
Yeah, as soon as we can, but I don't know, I would assume Bill would wanna be there, maybe the high school guidance, maybe some, some sort of, I don't know, I defer to you to determine who would be the experts who would wanna present on that.
I might suggest, I mean, I know that the conversation is up right now, but the application time for that, I think, is actually in April. So it might be something that we might want to do as a educational opportunity for parents and students to have more in the end of winter, early spring timeline.
Point taken, but if there's any sort of action we wanna take prior to the registration, the more time, the better. But again, I, we'll see what their schedules are.
I would like a little overview just for myself because it's not an area that I feel super strong in.
And if, and we're already, we had three communications tonight about people who are already thinking this over. So, yeah, it seems timely.
Yes.
Something I've wanted to dig into for a while.
Oh, Smith-Vogue had an open house, okay.
Do you want to do that for the December 12th? Because then the November 14th is gonna have the other, yeah.
That'd be great.
That'd be great.
December 12th.
And that gives parents time to, you know, we'll remind, so they can come and watch and...
And so myself or Megan will reply to those, that correspondence and just notify them that we're gonna have a presentation on this at the December meeting too.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Madam Chair?
One, I would say to members of the, this body and, and city council, both CTEC and Smith are very open to having elected officials do a tour and spend like two or three hours. So I would, to see the different offers. And also, when we're doing the presentation, I would like to see the fiscal difference.
Yes.
Transportation and then tuition.
With current transportation data. Can I ask, Mayor, do you think that's something you would recommend we try to do as committee members before that December meeting? Is do those tours?
I would, I mean, and it's not that one's better than the other, they're just dramatically different.
Yes.
And, and that, you know, I would say take a look. And I know that both CTEC and Smith-Vogue have added programs that I haven't, I mean, I know they have them, but I haven't gone to them. So, you know, like our schools, every year, things might change to get better.
Who would you recommend to organize something like that?
Or should we go, we should go individually so that we don't...
I would go individually, just the principals of both.
Individually contact?
Yeah.
Not through the chair, just individually?
No, I would just individually. I mean, maybe two at a time, but neither program is super big.
Yeah.
Well, tomorrow, I mean, Thursday is, I'm going to Smith-Tech. I think the tour is 10:30 to noon. It's for all guidance counselors to go and see what, and so I'm going, I'm tagging along with the guidance counselors to actually see it. So there are some guidance counselors times, so I can find out when I go, what would be the best venue. And then I can share it and then you can all individually.
Do you think they'd be annoyed if one of us piggybacked on that tour?
No.
Okay, when, what was the date of that?
So it's Thursday.
It's Thursday?
Yep, it's 10:30 to noon.
Okay, you got in first. Good job. I don't know, I'm, thank you very much.
Are you piggybacking or are you thinking?
I gotta look in my book.
Yep.
It's a great, yeah, I will do that. Thank you to the folks who have raised that concern.
Yeah. To be clear, this Thursday, October 26th?
Yep.
Okay, yes. Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Do you wanna come with us?